Our lights go out. Madam Clerk, could you call roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Combs.
President.
Mr. Henchy.
President.
Mr. Luther. Ms. Nelson.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington. Mr. West.
Here.
Seven council members present.
Thank you. Could you please stand for the pledge?
Pledge of flag. The agents salute and pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome to stand.
Yeah, watch the weather.
Okay, we'll move on to comments from visitors. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to our public hearing. There will be one public hearing on this evening's agenda for the purpose of considering the reclassification of a tract of land located at 102 through 103 East 10th Street, Fulton, Missouri, from its present designation of R1 residential to R3 residential. This hearing is now declared open. First call is for anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter. Seeing no one come forward. I'll have a second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Again, seeing no one come forward. Third call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter? Seeing no one, there will be three calls issued to anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter being considered tonight. First call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll have a second call. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? And third and final call, is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing no one come forward, this public hearing is now closed and we'll return to the regular agenda. Okay, first thing is the consent agenda. And it is quite lengthy, but I'm going to read it because there's a lot of people that I've appointed to different boards and commissions. First, on A, a city council meeting minutes of May 28th. B is city council minutes from June 11th. And C is the crop walk that occurs every year, they use the sidewalks. D, the appointment of David McDaniel to the Board of Adjustment for an unexpired term to expire in June of 2027. E is the appointment of Carolyn Click to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term. F is a reappointment of Larry Doyle to the Parks Board. G is appointment of Renee Graham to the Parks Board for a three-year term, and Larry's is a three-year as well. H, the appointment of Kathy Omehandro to the Park Board for a three-year term. I is Don Masick, a reappointment to the Personnel Board for a three-year term. J is the reappointment of Louis Beatty to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term. K is a reappointment of Mike Ibel to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term. L is the appointment of Todd Gray to the Public Safety Commission for a two-year term. And M is a reappointment of Richard Vaughn to the Public Utility Board for a four-year term. Can I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept. The consent agenda has read.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I see that you have some reappointment. Some of these positions. I had a consentment in Ward War had an interest in being reappointed, but was not asked. I know that's a position that you have, is to ask anyone who is interested in being on the board. That person felt they wasn't asked and they had interest in continuing. Is that something? I just want to know if that was something that they overlooked, but didn't ask if that person wanted to continue that appointment. That's just a question.
Okay, no, it wasn't overlooked.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a concern that if some of these others are being reappointed and they were asked, is there any reason why that person wasn't asked to continue?
If you would like to discuss that after the meeting, we certainly can. I don't think that's something we need to discuss in public meeting.
I was just concerned, I know it's a decision that you make, but yeah, I was just concerned.
Yeah, we can take that up, be glad to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I'm good.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have the DOA report.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Well, in the interest of keeping things moving, given the tsunami we're experiencing outside, I will say that you have the report in front of you, and if you have any questions, again, I am here and the staff is here to answer those. May was a particularly busy month for us with getting some projects going and some work, very important work that we're looking to do on the wastewater treatment plant moving ahead. So again, if there are any questions, we're here to answer them for you.
Mr. Mayor, one question.
Yes, sir.
I saw several places, I can't find it right now, obviously, but to an inventory of lead service lines, can you fill me on what that's about? Real quick.
Yeah, Darrell, do you want to come up and talk about that? I think Anna was here a couple of meetings ago and gave the explanation, but I believe you were gone at that meeting.
Yeah, he's, hold on just a second, he's going to turn it up.
The city to obtain a single audit. So a single audit does increase the work we as auditors perform, as well as adding additional reports to the financial statements. So the did, the city did have federal expenditures of approximately 1.3 million for programs that are listed in the schedule of expenditures of federal awards on page seventy-five. The most significant expenditures were related to various TAP grants. The first report related to the single audit is the report on internal control and compliance related to the financial reporting, and we noted no material weaknesses and no instances of noncompliance. That report can be found on pages seventy through seventy-one. And the second report is the report on internal control and compliance related to major federal programs. We expressed an unmodified or a clean opinion on the compliance and had no findings. And that report is on pages seventy-two through seventy-four. The next report we issued is the auditor's communication letter. So this letter consists of comments about the audit process and is required under our professional standards to be communicated to the city council. During our audit, we noted no transactions that we considered both unusual and significant. GASB statement ninety-six related to subscription-based information technology arrangements was implemented during 2023, but it did not have an impact on the city's financial statements. GASB statements one hundred related to accounting changes and error corrections and one oh one related to compensated absences will be effective for the fiscal year 2024, and we can work with the city of Fulton to determine if that will have an impact on the financial statements going forward. We do evaluate the key factors and assumptions used to develop significant estimates in the financial statements, and we determined that they were reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. We also found the accounting records to be in good order. We did propose a few adjustments as a result of our audit procedures, but nothing significant there. We had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues and had no difficulties in performing our audit. We felt we received full cooperation of the city staff. The next letter we issue is the management letter. So this letter is used to communicate any findings we may have about the city's internal control, as well as certain other matters that we deem important enough to merit your attention. So although the scope of our engagement was not directed towards an opinion on internal control, we do consider it as a basis for designing our audit procedures. Based on this, we did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control. We do note one matter involving internal control and just provide it as a recommendation for the city to enhance its internal control related to the internal service funds. Both the municipal garage fund and the health insurance fund are currently operating with a negative fund balance. For internal service funds, we just recommend that these funds break even, and I think some improvements have been made specifically to the municipal garage fund to help increase those revenues in future years. And then the final report that we issue is the report for MIRMA. So we issued a report on the schedule of payroll reportable to MIRMA for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This is in compliance with the requirements of MIRMA. Okay, I know I just covered a lot of information, but any questions you have about what I've covered or just the audit process in general?
I would just say that, you know, it's been a very positive experience again to work with Williams Keepers, and definitely want to give a shout out to the finance team, to Dustin and his staff. They put a lot of time and effort in gathering the information, and I know you guys were going through with a fine-tooth comb. So appreciate all the effort there. I would reiterate, as you mentioned, some changes have been made to those internal service fund accounts, and then you guys are going to also see some changes moving ahead into the next budget year that we feel very confident will enhance that and make it a more positive experience for the city's financial standing. So thank you very much, Kristin.
Well, again, thank you for allowing me.
As a city, how do we look to our peers, you know, I mean, to, to the other cities that you've audited as far as our audit?
I would say it is a little bit difficult to compare necessarily between cities just because some cities have various different funds. Like you have, you have quite a few different, like an internal service fund. Some cities don't have internal service funds, but I would say there's nothing concerning, based on the audits that we do of other cities, that you could necessarily improve or do better. I would say you guys are, you're doing great compared to your peers and, you know, the mid-Missouri area where we kind of focus our audits. Yep.
I was just going to bring up that we've been talking about the health insurance fund and the garage fund for many years. So to see that we're taking some measures to get that corrected is a very positive step. So I appreciate you pointing that out. It was a very good, clean audit. My only complaint, I guess, would be I didn't get the report until late this afternoon, but I was able to get through a substantial portion of it. So in the future, it'd be good to get.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept?
Yep. Motion to accept.
Second.
Very good. Does anyone have any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the presentation of the 2024 capital budget. We don't have to, to vote on this. It's all you up here know. This is, we just submitted to you all. This is ninety-nine percent sure it's going to change. Up or down, or, or Courtney, you want to discuss that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So I know in the past, it's always been described as the wish list. I'd like to think of this as a more strategic wish list, if you will. So as the mayor mentioned, this will change. Simply because something's in here does not mean it's going to be included in the operational budget necessarily, nor does it mean that if it's not included, it won't be included. So I would ask that you guys take your time. I know this is a lot of information to digest as well. But again, I'm really proud of the departments and their staff for getting this information and getting a really great idea of not only what 2025 could potentially look like, but what the next three years may look like for us. As you all know, when it comes operation, comes time to make the operational budget, it's all going to depend on what is feasible and reasonable to get done. So this is a plan, but this is a more strategic plan, I feel, than we've had perhaps in the past. So again, I want to thank everybody for putting a lot of time and effort into getting this together.
I can say that the department heads and even some of the supervisors have a chance to, for input into the budget, both capital and operating. And in the past, I can tell you, we never had that option. So I think it's, it's coming together, and hopefully Courtney thinks we're going to have this done by November. So let's hope so.
We're going to have that operational budget ready to roll. I'm going to go on the record. I've said it internally, and now I'm saying it in front of all of you. So we're going to have to, Dustin, it's on you, bud. We're going to get it done.
We won't be here on December thirty-first trying to pass the budget. Okay, we'll move on to council concerns. Councilman Henchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have no concerns, but I would like to reiterate that we have a Public Safety Commission meeting on this Thursday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. And that's all I have.
Councilman West?
I have no issues or concerns at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes, I had a couple constituents concerned. They're streaming our meetings, and they're having trouble hearing some of the things that we say. Okay there, but when it comes to us, and I don't know if there's anything we can do about it or whatever, but a lot of them are having trouble hearing our replies or whatever, and I just wanted to bring that up.
If I could, Mayor, one of the things that we've worked on is speaking directly into our microphone. As yours is up high, if you could pull it down closer to your mouth.
You can.
There you go. That will increase it. And Jordan Lewis is our sound guy, and we have trouble. We can't really hear while we're on YouTube of what's going on. So we're not really able to fix it. So feedback like that lets us know to work. But yeah, if you can lean in and make sure that you're at your microphone, it will really pick up for the people viewing at home. We may have had a little difficulty with that microphone tonight, but we'll find out after the meeting's over.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I just, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, I, for some reason, I have trouble hearing this side more than this side. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know why.
There you go.
Big louder. Okay, Councilman Stone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There was a Historic Preservation Commission meeting held on June the twelfth. I was unable to attend due to a work conflict. The next meeting is scheduled for July the seventeenth. The Historic Preservation Commission has some part of the old warehouse space in terms of the old beehive kiln, and I know there's, there was discussion concerning the brownfield around that in terms of how we were going to preserve that. There was then an explosion of ideas of what we could do for that entire space. I know that we had the open forum and the community town hall, not necessarily a town hall, but the community forum to discuss that. And so Councilman Henchy, with her specific questions that you had on that area that either I could address or Kyle could?
I just saw that the, it had been placed on hold, and I was just kind of wondering when it was going to resume.
You mean the development of it, or?
It just said it's on hold on it. That's what I was asking.
If, I'm assuming it means the development of it, and it's probably because of the, the community input step that we had.
The K-State portion said it was on hold.
Then I'll let, I'll let Kyle address it.
Kyle Grummer, City Engineer, and, yes, Bill. So what is meant by that is the technical assistance to brownfields that runs out of K-State and South Dakota State as well. They are, they have quite the workload right now, and so their next step for us is taking that visioning session that was had and, and creating some renderings and things like that for us. And so we're just waiting, we're on hold, waiting for that kind of information back so we can, so we can kind of really take a, take a deeper look into, into the options. Right, right. And, and, you know, there is, the city's still entertaining. You know, we, we obviously have that site over there. There is some activity as far as projects that we're looking at through detention and stormwater and whatnot over there. So yeah, everything's not on hold over there. It's just that, that kind of portion that, that Kansas State and South Dakota State Technical Assistance to Brownfields is kind of helping us with.
Thank you, Kyle. Mr. Mayor, the only other thing I have is a huge thank you to the city staff for the street fair. I'll let Lauren, Councilwoman Nelson, speak more on it since she's from that committee. But as a vendor and as a citizen, I mean, the heat, we had nothing to do with, but the, just everything about the event went very, very smooth. There was lots of presence of, of city employees, both in uniform and out of uniform, and it just could not, it was clean, it was taken care of. I didn't hear of any issues with, with anybody having anything. So I just, a huge thank you to all the city staff that had anything to do with the street fair this past weekend.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Luther, he's not here. Councilman Combs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Plan and Zoning Commission has not met since our last meeting, and I have no concerns to that.
Councilman Washington?
Park Board meeting, I think it's in July, so we have not met this month. I'd want to pass on my time to Councilman.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a whole list of things over here. So I will go ahead and.
Maybe we should have skipped her, huh?
Reiterate what Jeff was saying about the street fair. The citizens don't realize what the city puts into it. You provide electricity, you provide workers, trash, police officers. The fire department is there, golf carts, all kinds of things that our, our community doesn't realize that the city provides. So I appreciate that, and, and the volunteers that show up to run the street fair appreciate that. So thank you so much, and I, I agree with Councilman Stone in the fact that we had very, very few issues. I think there was a little bit of miscommunication with some of the street fair members, but that was solved really, really quickly, and we just appreciate the city very much in that. So thank you. The utility board did have an opportunity to meet. I was unable to go to the meeting. I did, however, come and get a quick overview. I want everybody to kind of be on alert for some trash can recommendations. I know that we have talked about that several times. We have heard from constituents in our community, and we want to put some policies in place. We want to try to implement some changes that are going to stick, and so be looking for a recommendation from the utility board on that. We have some exciting opportunities for shared power. We're very, very early in the stages of communication, so I look forward to hearing more about that. We are also going to be talking about the incremental adjustments on our utility rates. I know that that was mentioned whenever we had to increase rates this year. We don't want to have to do that again. We don't want to have to make these huge adjustments. We want to make adjustments that are small, incremental, and planned so people know what that looks like for the future and can plan for each January, knowing exactly what's going to happen and what's going to be in place. So I want everybody to kind of be on alert for that. And those utility rates and adjustments, the Consumer Price Index is actually defined by the Auditor's Office for the state of Missouri. So that's going to help us in guiding us on how to make those adjustments. So be, be on the lookout for those. And I think that that's everything I have. That, I think that's enough for tonight. No concerns. Did I miss anything, Daryl? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I think we should recognize Deputy Mayor Nelson on her win on the 5K run for the street fair.
The mayor thinks I'm going to be running the Boston Marathon.
Yeah, she's probably packing today. And I think that's all I have. Courtney, do you have a minute?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first off, I would say we are aware that there are some tree limbs down across the city, so I would ask everyone to be super cautious as you travel home or if you're out traveling right now, and if you are, hopefully you're not listening to this stream live. You need to focus in on driving. But again, please make sure you check our social media. We do have updates. I know that the Fulton Police Department also has some updates out there as well, so please be cognizant of that. And of course, if there are any outages, please contact the power plant. I am aware of, of one down line at this point, and I know that they're working on that already. The other thing I wanted to do is introduce the Fulton Sun editor, Emily O'Leary. So we were fortunate to have the editor at our meeting here tonight. She was promoted approximately a month ago, and she's done a really great job of highlighting a lot of things going on in the city of Fulton. So we really appreciate the partnership with the Fulton Sun and that you're helping us get our stories out there. So thank you very much for being here tonight. And that's it, Mayor.
Okay, Daryl, do you have an update on the weather situation? We could, since we're on the air, or do you know yet? Bill? Russ, do you all have anything? I, I've been getting. Yeah, I've been getting that the power's out quite a, quite a few places around mid-Missouri.
The latest updates that I'm getting from Chief Singh and my own officers that are out there right now. Power line down at twenty-four sixteen North Bluff, also a line down on Mohawk. A tree in the road near Mocane and Tennyson, so please be careful going home that way. Eight hundred block of Center Street, and also another line down at Tennyson and South Winds. We had a tree down at Jeff City and Coats and Dessin, tree down in the eight hundred block of Court Street. Power lines were down at Bluff and Hornet, and we just ask for everybody to be safe if they're out traveling this evening or have to get out for any reason. You know, slow down and, and pay attention to what's ahead of you because something could pop up as a surprise, so.
Good. Thank you, Chief. We, I think that's good for the citizens that's watching to know. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read Resolution thirty-five forty-seven, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution thirty-five forty-seven, MPUA Mutual Aid Agreement. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to a mutual aid agreement with Missouri Public Utility Alliance, MPUA. Make a motion. We pass Resolution thirty-five forty-seven at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. This is just a reoccurring contract we have with them. It's been in effect, Daryl, for many, many years. And they, they were here yesterday, Monday, yesterday. Yeah, yesterday, and we had a meeting here that was an excellent meeting. But anyway, we, does anybody have any questions on? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Now we'll move on to ordinances. Councilman Stone, would you read Bill number seventeen thirteen, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number seventeen thirteen, rezone one oh one to one oh three East Tenth Street. An ordinance reclassifying, under the zoning code, attractive land located at one oh one and one oh three East Tenth Street in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing effective date. I make a motion to move Bill number seventeen thirteen to second reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very good. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to bring up that this is the one that I had brought up last meeting where it's been zoned incorrectly for a very, very long time.
That's, that's basically what we're doing, cleaning it up.
Exactly. And so that's why I'm, again, just bringing it up that we need to look at the planning portion of zoning to where we can help plan and find more issues like that. I know there are other ones out there too, where right now we're putting our constituents to manage that, where we have some things that we could be doing that wouldn't be putting on other people to do.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, all in favor of passing Bill number? Let's get back to it. Seventeen thirteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very well, we'll move that on to the next meeting for final approval, hopefully. Councilman West, could you read Bill number seventeen eleven for us, please?
Yes, sir. Bill number seventeen eleven, ordinance number blank, surplus property eight one eight Vine Street. An ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to declare attractive land located eight one eight Vine Street in Fulton, Missouri to be surplus property, authorizing its distribution, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number seventeen eleven for third reading at this council meeting by title only.
Second.
Very good. Do we have any discussion on this? It's the second reading. We discussed it already. Does anybody have anything?
I wasn't here at the last meeting, Mr. Mayor, but this plot of land is just a single lot, like what accounts.
Yes.
Very nice lot.
It is a nice lot. Small.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Bacon.
Just green grass.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Councilman, you read that again, please?
Yes. Bill number seventeen eleven, ordinance number blank, surplus property eight eighteen Vine Street. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to declare attractive land located eight eighteen Vine Street in Fulton, Missouri to be surplus property, authorizing its distribution, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number seventeen eleven for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
Okay, very good. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Henchy?
Here. Yes. I couldn't hear you.
I do the same thing. Mr. Luther? Miss, Miss Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Councilwoman Nelson, you, would you read Bill number seventeen twelve?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I would just like to say I'm going to make a huge effort to try to be louder. Okay.
Good.
Bill number seventeen twelve, append public nuisance ordinance. An ordinance appending chapter forty-six, environment, article two, section thirty-two, public nuisance of the Fulton City Code, and establish an effective date. I make a motion to move Bill number seventeen twelve for a third reading at tonight's council meeting. Second.
Okay, this again is a bill, a second reading. So we, we did discuss this, and this is basically just cleaning up our public nuisance ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Councilman Nelson, would you please read that again?
Bill number seventeen twelve, append public nuisance ordinance. An ordinance appending chapter forty-six, environment, article two, section thirty-two, public nuisance of the Fulton City Code, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion, we place Bill number seventeen twelve for final passage at tonight's council meeting. Second.
Very good. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Luther, Miss Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will move on to announcements. City Hall Legends and Solid Waste will be closed on Thursday and Friday of next week, July fourth and fifth for Independence Day. The pool will be closed on the fourth only. The next city council meeting will be July the ninth at seven PM with the first, with the work session at six thirty.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have one thing. I'd like to have anyone who wants to represent it to drive out to South Winds. They're now making new roads. Going to be thirty houses put in there, so my backyard's almost gone, but, but we're having a lot of noise out there. So anyhow, South Winds started their improvement on housing. So I just would like everybody to come out and take a look and get a chance.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other business tonight, all entertaining, a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming tonight.